Excuse me, here.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Chester Norakis.
Here.
Wes Ryan.
Here.
Roger Sprague.
Here.
Susan Walkie.
Here.
And Kip Ward.
Here.
Next item on the agenda is comments from citizens present. Do we have a sign up sheet? Thank you Sandy. Thank you Allison. And I have Christine Tell on the list here. Come forward, please state your name into the microphone.
My name is Christine Tell of Glen Eden Beach. Members of the Urban Renewal Agency, thank you for allowing me to provide comments. I am the Chair of the Board of the Seles Bay Music Festival. I'm here to speak to you about how your investment in the Lincoln City Cultural Center created the opportunity for a partnership with the festival that has produced benefits for all students in our Lincoln City schools in ways that you cannot imagine. In 2014, the Oregon Community Foundation awarded the Seles Bay Music Festival and the Lincoln City Cultural Center a grant that spans five years for the purpose of returning music to our schools. The Studio to School Project Grants were awarded to only 18 sites in Oregon. A winning point for our project was that the Seles Bay Music Festival was partnering with the Lincoln City Cultural Center judged to be a vibrant center for the arts that serve the community. The results are notable. Full-time sixth grade band returned after an absence of 10 years. Sound and light elements added to the Taft Commons to create a performance center the community will enjoy for years to come. Here are some numbers for this year. 125, sixth graders taking band one hour a day the entire year. 850, students in grades kindergarten through five who now have music two to three days a week. One out of every three of our 675 students in Taft 712 are enrolled in some kind of music class. The results, attendance is improving along with the mathematics and reading performance of our sixth grade band students. Last June, we asked our sixth graders what was the most important thing they learned in sixth grade band. One student commented, "Tempo and learning to play together is really important, otherwise the sound is not so good." Another sixth grader summed it up this way, "When you are part of something, you have to show up." Under Nikki Price's leadership, the Lincoln City Cultural Center has shown up. Collaborations such as ours provide further returns for all students in our schools. Your investment provides benefits for years to come. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to provide comments.
Thank you, Christine. And there's no minutes of meetings available, so the next item is Special Order of Business Presentation by the Lincoln City Cultural Center Annual Report by Director Nikki Price. Oh, excuse me, thank you, thank you very much. Are there others who would like to sign up to speak? Okay. Thanks. Thank you. Okay, Judy Hardy?
Good evening, thank you for inviting me up here. I live in Otis and I have been a volunteer with the Cultural Center for many, many years and I'm currently a paid staff. I remember when we were meeting downstairs in this building in a little room with not even a computer to make anything work. We have come so far when we first went into that building, it was a disaster to put it funnily. I mean, if you're an adult and you tried to go to the bathroom, forget it. I mean, that's just one example. And through the hard work of Margaret Junkie, who was sitting next to me, and all the grant writing, and all the volunteers, and Nikki, and Elizabeth Black, and I could go on and on. It is remarkable place right now. I mean, there's people in and out there all day long. It's hard to get work done, to be honest with you, because there's so many people coming in and asking questions, wanting to know about Lincoln City. And I think everyone that works in that building and every volunteer does a tremendous job of representing Lincoln City to our visitors. And plus, all the studios are filled, we have ballet for the kids, we have art classes. I could go on and on for an hour on all the benefits that this center provides to Lincoln City. And I just hope that we continue. Thank you.
Thank you Judy. Arlene?
Arlene Gowing, Otis, Oregon. I've mentioned to several of you folks here that whatever you do in Lincoln City certainly affects Otis and anybody in the North County. And really, I'm going to keep this very, very short. I'm going to say where else, and that's about my message, where else can you find what you have here? That's such a good example for other communities. Thank you.
Was there anyone else who wished to speak? Okay, thank you. We'll go back to Nikki. Thank you.
So thanks again for having us here for this annual update on the Lincoln City Cultural Center. It's been a year since we were here giving you all the information on our activities and our programs. It's also been three years since we last discussed our lease, and it's been 10 years since that lease was originally signed. So I think it's a really good time for us to take a measure of what's been accomplished and find out how we can continue working forward together. So what we're going to be asking you for here today, after we get done updating you on the last year, is basically a continuance of our, of the progress, of the partnership that we have right now. We think it's working, and we think it's really giving great benefits for the people of Lincoln City, and we'd like you to consider making it permanent. We'd like to continue to make the leaseholder improvements that we're making at the Lincoln City Cultural Center and on the D-Lake School Building, and we'd like to continue making the normal building maintenance. And we'd like to be able to call upon Urban Renewal in case of emergency or in case of major structural problems that we can't tackle on our own. And in case of emergencies, such as the flood last year or when the wall fell down in 2013, we'd like to be able to call upon the expertise and the funds of our landlord to help make those much needed repairs. We'd like to continue to schedule and execute all the cultural arts and community programs that we now are providing, and in return, we're hoping that the Urban Renewal Agency will continue to waive our lease payments. We feel that we have more than repaid those lease payments through improvements in the building, and we were glad to do it, and we'd like to continue with this arrangement. We'd like to also keep our purchase option so that we can tell the people who are giving us funding in our, in the foundation world, how serious the city is and how serious we are about maintaining the D-Lake School as a cultural arts building forever. And we'd also like some help with mowing the lawns from the city's staff. So, that's our proposal for today. If you decide to go forth and approve this proposal, here is the organization that you're going to enable. So we have seven-member Board of Directors for our nonprofit. They average about three years of experience of service, sorry, to the Cultural Center, anywhere from 10 years to one year. They're a very involved board, and they're involved in fundraising. We just got done with a big fundraiser on Saturday, very successful, and we think we have an active working board that anyone would be proud to have. We have six staff, serving a collective four FTE. 283 volunteers in 2015, serving a collective 6,384 hours. We have seven monthly tenants, and those are people who are in the arts and culture fields, doing their different arts media. Ten renter instructors with about 25 classes a week. We have 42 gift shop vendors who make and sell their goods in our gift shop. Our arts partners are putting on shows throughout the year and all kinds of programs that fulfill their missions. And we do all this as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit with an annual budget of $320,000. So in 2015, we saw growth in both individual events and attendance. We logged 357 events, and of the people that we could count, that's 31,694 counted patrons. That's an 11% increase over 2014. We thought you might want to know where they're coming from, and we aren't always able to tell, because we can't tackle everybody who comes in the door and ask them what their zip code is, but sometimes we can. And so in the Chessman Gallery, for example, we have a sign-in book, and about half of the people who sign in that book come from, have zip codes that are outside of our 50-mile radius. And when you look at our ticket, our ticket sales for our events, about a third of those have no zip code, because those are walk-ins and we don't have time to get them. But of those that are recorded, about half of those come from outside our 50-mile radius. So a few more numbers that might interest you. Our farmer's market, if you conservatively say that 500 to 1,000 people attend the farmer's market every Sunday through the season, that's between 13 and a half and 27,000 people coming to the farmer's market alone. We tally 6,767 people in our visitor center last year, and those are the people who we were able to ask where they were from. So there's probably a lot bigger number of people who didn't check in. And then if you take those classes numbers, and you take 25 classes a week, an average of five students per class, that's 6,500 student visits to the Cultural Center in the 2015. So of those 357 events, we had 75 of them in the auditorium with our performing arts program. Concerts and plays and fundraisers, benefits, all sorts of things of that nature. We also continued our dedication to the visual arts, which is the core of the Four Seas and now the Lincoln City Cultural Center. So we have 12 gallery shows, and in addition to each gallery show, we have engagement events such as gallery talks and concerts and various workshops. My favorite one was the octopus printing workshop. As by virtue of our location and our facility and our role in the community, we put on lots of community events. We hosted the Joint Ways and Means Committee from the legislature. We do blood drives, we were the launching spot for the parade, and we do all this because we're really part of our community. We're also very dedicated to youth programs. As Christine mentioned earlier, we have partnerships with lots of other organizations, and we put on lots of shows on our own. For example, we have Theater Works and Literature to Life, those are touring companies. You've all heard Missoula Children's Theater, which we do twice each summer. We also have outreach events where we take our artists and send them out into the schools. We have make and take ornament sessions, you know, basically it's ongoing throughout the year. And we estimate that we did about 2,000 separate arts opportunities for our local kids. So as I mentioned earlier, we're dedicated to continuing to upgrade the D-Lake School Building, especially in ways that will serve our programs. As you are no doubt aware, we just finished our commercial kitchen. We also installed sound rated doors in the auditorium, and we also did some significant upgrades to the ceramic studio offerings. And then we had our surprise improvements, which I mentioned earlier. We have a complete upgrade of our fire sprinkler system and new dry head type sprinklers throughout the building. It's much safer and a real benefit to the infrastructure of that building. So our income in 2015, $317,681. And we have about 36 of that, 36% of that coming directly from program service areas. So that's ticket sales, art sales, gift shop sales, and the like. And rental income is about 24%. So then we have memberships and donations at 19%, and then we have grants at 15%. But I'd like to make sure you know that that grants figure does not include the monies that came from Urban Renewal last year. We considered those a pass-through reimbursement, so that's $47,000 additional grant dollars that we earned and invested in our programs and in the building.
Quick question Nikki.
Sure.
That doesn't include the waived fees, right? The waived rents?
The waived fees.
Waived rents?
No.
Okay.
No. So that grant figure, that piece of the pie, that's $47,000, and those are grants that we went out and got from other outside organizations. And also, and the rental income is just straight income from day, month, and hourly rental. Okay, so last year, we had a good year for donations, about $61,000, which was a 10% increase over last year. We thought maybe you might like to see where those donors come from, so we did an analysis of the zip codes. And as you can see, about half of them come from 97367 zip codes, and then another 25% come from the areas right outside Lincoln City. So I think that really shows our local support base. And this is a little bit about how we spend the money. This is our operating expenses of last year. Those direct program costs are 29%. Those are direct payments to musicians and artists and people who provide the program services. We spend about 38% on payroll and about 9% on maintenance and utilities. And I don't know if you can see, because I didn't put it in white, but there's a small piece of the pie that's 2%, that's what we spend on fundraising. It's an important figure in the nonprofit world, making sure that your fundraising expenses are small compared to your fundraisers, your income at large. So at the end of 2015, this was our financial position. We had about $28,000 in operations and another $28,000 in what we call restricted funds. Those are the ones that we are keeping before they can be spent. They're grant funds, basically, that we were holding so that they could be used in their proper way. Our reserves are $45,000, not quite two months' expenses, and the industry standard that we're hoping to reach eventually is three months of operations. And then we have our Chessman Project Fund. Now that's the fund of monies that was left to us by PJ Chessman. Since 2015, we've used some of this money to finish up the kitchen, and we intend to keep this money as seed money for larger grant projects. So as we go into the next few years, when we're able to do some larger grants to perhaps upgrade the outdoors or to, you know, put some improvements into the lower level, we'll have some matching funds so that we can get those grants going. So we have a few more financial goals, but just so you know how serious we are about becoming a solid organization, we have implemented our signature fundraiser. We've had one in 2015, and then we had another one just this past weekend, and we consider that culture course to be on a really good start. We're in our fourth year of budget planning and execution, and we've had four accounting reviews by Grimstad Associates, so all of our numbers are certified. We also have achieved an operational surplus, not a big one, but we're happy that we have an operational surplus. And we have all the spaces occupied and contributing to the bottom line. So it's hard to say how much economic impact the Cultural Center will have on Lincoln City and this surrounding area. One way to do it is to go to a national survey, like Americans for the Arts. This one's called Arts and Economic Prosperity. They surveyed arts organizations across the nation, and they figured out how much a given organization with a given budget will impact its local community. With our numbers, Americans for the Arts believes that we have $1.6 million in economic impact to Lincoln City. But there are some things that aren't all about money, and we think it's about equality of life. We think the Cultural Center is providing an improved quality of life for Lincoln City residents and for visitors. We think it's important for a city to have a stable venue for people who want to pursue their dreams, whether it is to make, you know, make things to sell in a small gift shop, or paint, or dance, or see shows, or just live an artistic life. This is a venue for them to do it. We also think it's important, the Cultural Center provides educational opportunities for students in local schools, and we believe it's important that the Cultural Center provide leadership, to be a hub for a growing arts community in Lincoln City. While we're doing it, we're preserving an important landmark, a building that a lot of people hold dear in Lincoln City, and we're providing an additional attraction for So we're going to move forward, and we're going to focus on greater operational results. We're going to get a new strategic plan that's going to take us through the next three years, and we're going to target some important building upgrades and property upgrades. We're just going to keep on doing what we're doing, if, and we can do it a lot better, if we continue to have a partnership with the city. So that's the end of our presentation. We've provided you all with your annual reports and our official letter of proposal, and John Collier, the President of the Board, and I would love to answer your questions.
Questions?
So, do you have a total of the amount of improvements that you folks have reinvested back into capital assets? Did that come out clearly?
Yeah, so...
We've obtained grants for a little over a million dollars for leaseholder improvements that we have on the books and are depreciating. And that excludes a couple of the other items that Nikki just referenced, for the reimbursement items from last year, but that over the years, over a million dollars.
Does that count the kitchen that you just...
Pardon me?
Does that count the kitchen? So...
Yes.
Not completely, some of the kitchen was this year. I was just quoting as of, end of 2015, but that would be maybe off by $30,000.
Thank you. Just a quick question, I'm trying not to beat a dead horse here, but the waived lease payment, where does that show up in your accounting? Is it not a donation? It's not, it's just...
No, it just, under the terms of our lease, it's a zero payment, and our account says there's really no place to record it.
I'll leave that one alone.
We could provide the numbers in a different way, if you would like.
It just seems odd that it's not accounted for anywhere.
Well, nonprofit accounting works a little bit differently, and since we are, you know, we don't have to...
I don't make a profit anyway, but I got my...
Well, but it's a...
The accountant says there would be no rate recorded as a liability and an offset as a grant, so we'd be creating a lot of zero-based work.
It's fine, it's not a huge deal, guys. It's just a question popped in my head.
And then back to Kip, we have about another $30,000 in furniture, you know, large things that in theory could be removed from the building.
Well, I just look at all the grants you've gotten and the investment that you've put back into the building. I think that, have you done an analysis, you know, free rent versus a million, some that you guys have put in of your own bucks? My guess is that you put in more than you've been, you know, more than...
Right, and I think it's important to remember too that we did pay rent until 2010, so for the first four years of the lease, you know, the city, the Urban Renewal Agency did receive those rent payments.
So at $30,000 a year, that's five years, $150,000, we put, you know, over a million in.
So we owe you like 900?
We'll take the credit card. But that was, that's a part of the key partnership, is, you know, the city acquired the building. It is sort of a landmark, and it is quite a landmark right along Highway 101. We used our nonprofit status, you know, to obtain grants and focus on the Cultural Center. A lot of that was, you know, building upgrades, just to make it a livable building, not necessarily arts and culture related, you know, the handicap ramp, you know, redoing the bathrooms, all the superstructure that had to be replaced. So we've invested quite a bit. And I think that was one of the reasons you came with a nonprofit. We could go out and get those grants to make those investments, get it focused on arts and culture to make it a center landmark here in the city. You know, and as well, we run and manage it with, as a nonprofit, you know, including developing our own personnel and volunteers, so, you know, it's really, that's one of the reasons in the long run, you've asked before, but we'd like to retain the purchase option because, but we believe in someday with our growth, that we'd like to, you know, actually acquire the property, you know, through the results, say of a big grantor or a big donor of some type. And we see that sometime in our future, just not in the immediate future. But meanwhile, the partnership with the city is a tremendously vital one, and we think it's been very successful. We hit our periods, but we've come through that, and you see we've achieved results on an increasing basis from year to year over the past five years.
Thank you.
I'm really struggling. I love the Cultural Center, okay, and you guys have done great things. So where I'm trying to work through in my head is, one, the request for a 25-year lease with no payments, and I'm not thrilled with that idea. It just seems too long of a time to say, we'll stick with these same terms. I'd be much more comfortable with a shorter one. But I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to put it in context of the community center. And we're not charging rent to the community center, correct? It's our building. And I don't want to charge rent to the Cultural Center. But then you're making improvements that are going to increase the value of the property, correct? And then you hope to buy that property, and at what point, and who will do that assessment of the value of it?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
The terms of the agreement are, of the current agreement, is that it's $1.6 million plus half the value of the difference between 1.6 and its assessed value. And if the assessed value drops below 1.6 million, it will not drop below that purchase price. So in other words, if the assessed value comes back in at, let's say, $1.9 million, then the purchase price would be $1,750,000.
We're looking at a 25-year agreement here.
That would be, that would be an extension of this agreement. If you did that, it just wouldn't matter how many years out, it would be that, if these agreements are, if the terms of this agreement are extended, that is the current terms of the agreement, or that is the term. And Ron's referring to the original terms signed in 2007.
Right.
As the basis of the valuation.
Yeah, that's the only thing I'm really struggling with in my mind, is to say, the term seems too long for me, but...
Well, we just, that's the terms of the original agreement.
I understand, I understand.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Sprague?
At what point do you anticipate that you'll be in a financial position to actually begin to make an offer? Have you calculated out that far?
Based on operational results, it'll be quite a while. Really, for an acquisition of a structure this size, you need either a major capital campaign focused on, you know, acquiring the building, and usually with that is a big donor, a donor that wants to see their name of the building or something like that, or just, you know, really leaves a big bequest and will put up the matching funds. You can't look to foundations and grants to do that. They'll put up some matching funds, but they won't be the impetus to in fact acquire a building like that. So, you know, right now, you know, we face a challenge, our donations raising, you know, just meeting operational budgets is a challenge each year. So, I mean, I could give you a projection, but it would really just be off the wing, to be very honest. I think we just have to reach that maturity level in which donors, large donors, sort of see us as a great opportunity, and they really see the long-term viability, and they'd like to submit their own personal legacy along with ours. So I think that'll be the impetus to in fact take us up to that next level.
At what point do you look forward to... At what point do you look forward to a day when you would be able to pay rent? Or have you calculated that one out?
We've not really calculated that out. I think our value proposition is we bring such a value to the building and to the community through it being an arts and cultural focused and an asset to complement the community center. You know, it makes it one of the attractions of Lincoln City. Lincoln City's business is tourism and retirement and having someplace to go and do after you get off the beach, an arts and cultural center, to go with the community center, the Glassport, just presents a gamut of activities that make Lincoln City a natural place to want to come visit for tourists, buy a second home, or retire here. I mean, the statistics in this area, we have one of the highest percentage of second home ownerships, you know, versus the whole nation. So it's not just our local residents that come to the community center, but it's people for their second homes coming out to spend the weekend or week, or, as well as the tourists that we all know about. So, you know, those are our three target communities, so, did I answer your question?
You did, thank you.
Well, I think that, that if you look at that statement where we laid out our financial position, you can see that, that while a rent payment could be made, it, it would deplete our reserves, you know, and it would be a slow decline unless we somehow manage to increase our donations by, by a similar amount each year. And what I hope that the council and their agency is wanting to do is help us build the organization so that we can look forward to a future of possibly buying the building, possibly paying rent and continuing to contribute to, to our, our community, but we won't be able to do it at our present level.
My thought was that you have been increasing the, the revenue each year and I was thinking out, how far do you need to go to a point where you're solvent enough so that you can pay rent and continue to increase?
Probably a, you know, five to seven year period of time-
I would agree.
... but, you know, that's sheerly conjecture on our part.
That's what I was looking for, thank you.
Right, I think, I think that's, that's wise, the five to seven years looks like if we continue on this trajectory, then we, we may be able to change the agreement at that point.
Thank you.
But we, we look at other, we've looked at all other models for arts and cultural centers throughout the state, throughout the nation, and basically, unless they've, you know, had a big donor that's bought the place and built it and made a contribution, basically there's a partnership like we're proposing, you know, with, with the local government, of where the nonprofit is responsible for programming and responsible for achieving grants to focus on its mission. Meanwhile, for the hard structural and support of the physical facility, they rely on the expertise and, and the resources of the local community or in fact in that business.
Mr. Anderson, did you have a question?
I do, I, I liked the conversation and Mr. Sprague hit on some of the things that I was interested in. I think John, as I recall from the budget committee of this agency, the budget's actually got a forecasted $50,000 kind of teed up for the, or, or referenced from the cultural center, 30,000 in rent and another $20,000 anticipated in those surprise unanticipated assists. So I'm, I'm looking at it as, if we continued our relationship, that 50,000 would be in essence out of the urban renewal revenue stream and, and provided to the cultural center. In looking at your budget and your forecasts, which are great to see because they're all going in the right direction as far as I'm concerned, you've got rent, the building rented, fully rented, I noted, you know, prior to the flood and after the flood, it's kind of an interesting mark, you know, of time. Biblical perhaps?
It's sure shot that way, yeah.
But I guess I'm, I'm wondering, I was looking for ways to answer Mr. Sprague's question of, could you ever really pay rent? And so where would it come from? And I'm, I'm not sure where your rent revenue is going to grow, if, if really artists can pay more in rent or, so are we going to, are you forecasting in five years that that much more building rent from, from tenants and program revenue? I mean, I, personally, I don't see those carrying your operating costs. Am I, am I missing something, that there's something on the horizon that you're going to be able to pop up the tickets into a range that's, they're going to pay for themselves and allow you to pay some kind of, you know, rent?
Well, I think very few arts and cultural organizations, you know, pay for all their operating costs through, through program fees. I think there are some out there and, and they're ones to look for, look to as, as models. I do believe that our spaces that we rent out currently, as they are improved, you know, each, we've had some trouble, especially in the lower levels, so we have not been able to charge large rents. But as those, those spaces are improved and as the economy continues to improve, I know that we will, we will be able to strengthen the rental program and, and get more for those spaces over time. Of course, utilities and all the other expenses will also go up over time, so, so I, I know that, that the rental program will continue to grow. The, back to the program fees, those will continue to grow as well, I hope by five to 10% a year, some sort of sustainable growth.
In ticket prices or program number?
Overall program, no, in ticket prices, I would say, in overall fees per event.
We'll be, we always are looking at all the, one, the economy is clearly improving, so that's going to be a tremendous benefit versus the recent history. And so we're always reviewing ways that we can lever, either additional events and growing it, raising the per ticket prices, you know, raising rents. Now, by time will it grow to such a point where that $30,000 annual rental now becomes an affordable budget item? You know, is, you, you can straight line it out, we, you know, were less than break even last year, mainly due to depreciation, and we did make a small operating profit of a thousand, which is more than most nonprofits. You know, so you could project out that five years from now, you know, the 30,000, you know, would, would be in there. I, I would also assert that, that 30,000 is also probably better spent on us leveraging our, our programming, other items within the building. And then to reference back to the urban renewal, the urban renewal $50,000 line item is, we've called on urban renewal and they've supported us with no line items in the budget, so that's as much in there to be honest with the budget process. Are we going to use, are we looking at that, can we spend $50,000 every year? No. We're, we're looking to add as sort of a fail safe and the best minds are coming up, well, what's a reasonable figure given our track record? Well, we can only look backwards, we can't look forward. If you could tell us when the next pipe will burst or the next wall fall down, we can give a budget, but it's not like, you know, it's an emergency fund to have available, not, not a reliable budget for us.
Right. Because it isn't part of our budget to, you know, to look to that.
Madam Chair, I guess I would applaud that effort because that's how I have watched it. You've done a great job of, when notified of, of issues, you've gotten grants, whether it's the roof or whatever, and urban renewals piece has been very small. And I like that partnership between the cultural center and urban renewal or the city that helps leverage, you know, whether this building or some of the programs as stated earlier. Madam Chair, I guess one of the things that I've been thinking about is what is the, you know, parameters of, you know, call it a subsidy if you want, but I look at this as, you know, for the time being around a $50,000 subsidy, that we're prepared to offer out as a value added back to the community. And I'm not as concerned about an operating profit, though I, you're going in the right directions, but honestly, I don't expect you to ever make it. Not that you can't and not that you won't get closer, but I would rather be in a position to encourage your reserves, encourage you the, the way you're going, rather than take, extract from you, you know, rent every month. I think it's better served. So that's, that's how I'm kind of viewing and I, I agree with the mayor. I, I don't know that I am excited about a forever lease or whatever, I like stops along the road to assess how things are going and, but I, I can't imagine Lincoln City being without the cultural center, but I, I do like to look at it periodically.
And we, of course, we'd be glad to do that, any, any stop places along the way. With, with this extra-
Excuse me, I, I have a, I guess a procedural question. Projecting out, say 15 years and you're in a position to buy the building, urban renewal, it will have sunsetted by that time. Now what happens to that money as it comes in?
I could address that, Madam Chair. So, just a couple of big dates coming up as far as the urban renewal district to, to where this resides. The first is that your final bond issue will be happening within the next three years. It will be done at that point. The district sunsets in 2024, which is eight years from now. Now, the agency itself can continue to exist, it will own assets such as this building, it has loan programs, so there will be money coming in, in. It will just simply be different than, than what it has been, because the district itself will have sunsetted. But the agency can continue. Now, if, if there comes a time when the agency is to be dissolved, then those assets will have to be transferred over to the city and become part of the city. Now, another part that, as, as the staff has discussed this, that we thought that we ought to bring up, one is the length of time. If you, if you are determining that the, that the value to the community of the cultural center and its operation is worth a waiver of these fees, one of the big questions that we had was how long? Should it go for 15 to 25 years? And the staff's feeling is that it should be a shorter period of time, or there should be some kind of evaluation periods built into that time period. The other question that we consider, that we have been discussing is that, is who should actually pay the subsidy? Because again, it's a payment, it's a loss of revenue for the urban renewal agency. Should the urban renewal agency bear the cost of that? Or if it's of value to the city, should the city pay the urban renewal agency the, the amount of the rent? So that the urban renewal agency then has those funds to be used for the projects and the programs that they currently operate.
I, I agree with Mr. Anderson that it's, I think it's better to have stops along the way, like a five-year lease, then another five years, and at least that there's a time to adjust and, and take another good look at it.
Mr. Sprague?
To me, we ought to be paying you. I'd love to have a tenant that improved my properties by a million bucks. What's the advantage in you owning that property?
If we were able to raise the funds to own the property and the funds to maintain it, then we would have the freedom to develop the property as we wish. We would also have the freedom to not develop it or not provide the programs, also as, as suited our organization. So I think that freedom would be the main reason to own that property.
Wouldn't help you get grants or anything more, or is that a criteria?
Does not appear to be a criteria. I think that most granters that I've spoken with appreciate the public nonprofit partnership more, honestly. I think it shows community investment and, and governmental investment, I think, I think it shows support from, correct, throughout the community when it shows these different organizations all working toward the same goal.
It seems to me the problem, part of the problem, huh? Everything's a problem, but, you know, you don't want to keep impri- pounding a million dollars worth of boards on another man's fence, you know, which is basically what you're doing. I mean, if I didn't, wouldn't get railroaded, I would just suggest we give you the building. It's certainly as viable as the culinary center and the city gets out a lot of support. And I, I don't ever envision you having to pay rent. I mean, you guys are like Santa Claus, you've made that building into something wonderful, it's zero city expense, so I don't know where we go from there, but I'd hate to see it another five years, you guys put another million dollars in and it's still not your building. So I would hope that we could do some creative financing to get you guys into there in a reasonable amount of time and not have to project out 25 years.
Thank you, we welcome that.
I'd just see something like that ourselves, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, I'm, we've spoken before Nikki and I think one of my biggest concerns about the cultural center is you and you not being there at some point. Well, it's, I think it's an honest concern, you have elevated that place to places we didn't think it would get to. Honestly, when I first was aware of it, it wasn't so good. And you've made it something special. And my concern is if you leave and we've given you a building, or if we have a 25-year program and all of a sudden it's not so good, how do we reel that back in? And that's, I know it's a lot of weight to bear, but it is a compliment at the same time.
Thank you.
But that, that's a concern I have, because I've seen before and I've seen after, and I don't so much like before, and I'd hate to see you go back to before. You've assured me that you've got things in place now that will move it forward, but back in my head, I'm still going, ah, but it's not Nikki.
Thank you very much for the compliment, I appreciate that. But it's that, that old adage about standing on the shoulders of giants, and that's, that's what I'm doing, you know, some of them are in this room behind me.
I meant, I did not mean to demean anyone.
No, and, and they're the ones who raised the significant money, significant money. What we've raised since I've been there has been very small in comparison to, to what was raised in the first five years. And it created the, the facility that you need to do the operations that, that we're doing now. So, so I, I can take credit for operations as they are right now, but they wouldn't be possible if someone hadn't improved the bathrooms and the electrical and the ramp and, you know, can you imagine trying to put on some shows without a handicap ramp in the, you know, the auditorium? It, it just wouldn't be possible. You have to have ADA access, as, as you all know very well. So, so that money was spent and that effort was done far before I got there. So, I don't have any intention of leaving, but I know that effort will continue after I go.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr.?
Having, being very involved with another nonprofit arts business-
Which shall not be named.
Uh, yeah, right. We own our own building, trust me, it's no picnic. We, we, most of our operating capital goes to repair the building. And it, it shortchanges us in, in some of the stuff that we can do. That's why I'm very pleased with what the, the cultural center has been able to do. You know, I mean, the PAC, everybody looks at the Performing Arts Center and goes, oh, that's, you know, pretty good facility, but it was built with urban renewal dollars, if I remember correctly. Newport bought the land and the seed money and they've had some big donors, I'm not even sure that they don't get some money from somebody else anyway. But anyway, I mean, so the arts community is one of those things that enhances life, adds to the business climate, the livability, but unfortunately, it just might break even. Usually it won't break even unless it's got, it's received some help. I understand about the, the rental, I mean, I was one of those, one of two counselors who voted against this whole proposition to begin with, and I'm very happy to say I was absolutely 100% wrong. So you've proven me that I was somewhere else. But I, I'm, I'm very pleased with it. I, this microphone is driving me nuts. I, this microphone is driving me nuts. I kind of liked what Mr. Chandler indicated, that, you know, that urban renewal is, or somebody over there said it, urban renewal is going to be sunsetting. This is an asset for the community. I don't think that urban renewal should bear the burden of the forgiven rent for the building or lease, whatever you want to call it. And I would like to see that inserted someplace in the city budget, because I think it's that important to the city. Having the windfall, or having the ability to borrow some money or get some money from urban renewal, if in fact the building has a major flaw or something, I think is an option. Also, as far as the lease is concerned, I am not into a 25-year lease, but I would be into an eight-to-10-year lease, or approval of the agreement, I'm sorry. I think anywhere from between five and 10 years is a good figure to have a complete review and go over it again. The Cultural Center is going to strive to be their own boss as much as they can, but I don't know of an arts facility anywhere that's reasonably successful that doesn't have some public money through a governmental agency coming into it. And I think what we are contributing is small potatoes compared to what we get back from it.
Thank you. Mr. Nikas, did you have a comment?
Yes, please. I'd just like to express my appreciation for all the work that the board has done, the volunteers have done, hundreds of volunteers, thousands of hours of volunteer labor. And you've met goals that you set a number of years ago. The events have gone from 200-plus up to 300-plus in four years. Patronage has gone up as well. Financial goals, you've achieved a significant fundraiser. You've achieved operational surplus. All your spaces are occupied, successful membership and donation drives. Great job. Donations, 50% of the donations come from Lincoln City. That indicates to me that there's a great deal of support in town for this, for this venture, and I appreciate that. And I support us continuing our partnership however we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I want to express my appreciation of the Cultural Center. I heartily support it and our continuing cooperation with the Cultural Center.
Thank you.
Anything else to say? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I got one thing.
Oh, sure.
If I can talk to these guys and they've given you the building, can I have my name on it?
It'd be some smooth talking. Smooth talking. Off the record?
The next item on the agenda is...
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Is the history in lease agreements. Are we going to continue to discuss that? We have three minutes left in the meeting.
Our staff can do that.
Okay, thank you, Allison.
Good evening, Chair Walkie and agency members. Thanks to John Collier and Nikki Price for that annual report. The agency asked staff for some history on the D-Lake School Building a little while ago, the acquisition, and we've provided that to you in the meeting material packet, along with the lease, lease amendments, and other agreements between the agency and the Cultural Center. So we're basically here just collectively to answer any questions, and this evening we've heard the request from the Cultural Center for the agency to continue rent forgiveness. Staff is here to answer any questions you may have and look forward to your discussion, and thank you for that so far. And then direction with what you'd like staff to bring back. You?
Your Honor, just on the issue of the option to purchase, an option to purchase is, requires a public hearing under ORS 221, 725, as well as findings under Chapter 271. So obviously, if in fact you give direction to do another option to purchase, which I believe, staff believes, has expired, then we'll have to have a public hearing. Similarly, the lease amendments and lease agreements typically, if not follow a public hearing, certainly have to be approved by either order or ordinance of the council.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Anderson?
Is, how do we go about directing urban renewal in the city to talk back and forth about making the forgiveness of lease rate as a city burden as opposed to an urban renewal burden? How do we go about that?
Madam Chair, the best, the best place to do that is actually in the budget committee meetings itself. The reason I say that is that the urban renewal already has the lease payment built into it as a revenue. If you are interested in the city paying the urban renewal, then you can bring that up in the budget. It becomes approved part of the budget and recommended to the city council for them to approve that in the, or to, when they adopt the budget.
Okay, good enough. That answered that question.
Thank you.
And one quick question, if I might?
Yes.
I'll try to make it quick. Help, Mr. Robertella, with the, with the purchase options has expired. Is the property available for sale? Does it put them in a bad position? Could someone offer, or do we have to put it up for sale? Or where does that lie?
Well, the property right now is burdened with lease. So they have an existing lease agreement, so any sale of the property would obviously involve addressing that lease. Just that the terms of the option agreement required that it be renewed every year with a letter to the manager. I don't think that occurred. It was only a three-year option to purchase anyway, so would have, even if it hadn't had that other problem, it would expire in September of this year.
Okay. It doesn't put them in a bad position, though, I mean, because we would have to put it up for sale, basically, for someone else to come in and offer to sell out from under them. I just want to make sure we're not allowing it to happen.
Any disposition of city property has to meet one of two criteria, and it has to be not necessary for public use, or the public interest will be furthered by the sale. So unless you can make those findings, you wouldn't dispose of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from agency members?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Nikas?
I would make a motion to direct staff to outline options for consideration and associated costs and impacts based on a presentation and agency discussion.
Second.
You have a motion and a second discussion?
So, yeah, could you, in layman's terms, what that motion?
Yeah.
It sounds good, but what are you expecting?
I'm expecting costs associated with a five-year renewal of the lease, or a 10-year renewal, or a 15-year renewal, basically, and the impacts of our continued partnership regarding how leasehold improvements assists from urban renewal, and the rest of the items listed under, on the slide there.
Is that something that, you know, it's a question, Madam Chair, is that something staff can do? Are they going to have to farm that out? This is the back of a napkin, okay?
Well, this was a recommendation from staff.
Okay.
So I presume staff is capable.
Good.
So I'm wondering, Mr. Anderson, most people don't go down and plop down a million bucks to buy a house. Most real estate transactions accrue over time. In our efforts, this would be a good time if we can somehow begin to transfer ownership in that property bit by bit over to the Cultural Center, the nonprofit. Otherwise, we're going to just be in the same spot eight years, 10 years. It just gets worse as they improve more and get less.
Okay. You know, I don't mind the exercise. I guess, you know, I'm not, honestly, I'm not sure. They're not here, and I'm not asking for an answer, but I don't think if I were the foresees, I would want you to give me the building.
Unless the buyer was offering.
Yeah, I feared that.
I'll give my hotel to whoever wants one.
They just didn't realize, you know, you know, this partnership that we have is a pretty good thing for both of us. So I'm interested in keeping that partnership and not putting them in a position of getting dumped on by owning a, as you know, Mr. Ward, historic buildings sometimes are money pits.
We just, by lack of, we take that off of the table. For them to generate a million bucks and then boom, that takes it off the table. And so somehow, if I had the answer, I would be giving it to you. But most, as I said, most real estate transactions accrue over time, and if somehow, I don't even know if they'd be interested in that, if somehow they own more of it five years from now than they own now, that would more be interesting.
Well, I'm definitely interested in, I think that we talked a little bit about it earlier, finding a, financing terms that would put them in a position of ownership, and combined with maybe a windfall from a donor or something, yeah. So if that motion, you know, I guess, if that's what we're trying to do is create options, or is this just a short-term, so that we can, the agency has something to negotiate with the city, you know, as far as a payback to the urban renewal? I guess I'm trying to figure out what we're, what we're trying to accomplish by this study.
Mr. President?
Madam Chair, I get the impression that we're really talking about two different things here. One is that we need to make sure that they have, we have an ongoing lease, number of years is still to be determined. But then, along with that, we're talking about what this motion is that's on the floor right now, and I see those as two separate motions. And so I think one is exploratory, the other would be, I guess you'd say, a direct, well, I don't know what the word would be. Anyway, it would, it would put the thing in place and make it a permanent, at least so they would have some feeling of permanency for the next five years or 10 years, whatever the figure is.
Mr. Nikas, was the motion to ask for options for us to consider?
Yes, to direct staff to outline options for consideration and associated costs and impacts based on the presentation and agency discussion.
Any further discussion on the motion?
And my intention, Counselor Anderson, is to get us to a point where we can make a motion and vote on it regarding our partnership with the Cultural Center.
I appreciate that. Did we, the second one?
Yes, Mr. President, seconded.
Okay.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. And were there any other agency member comments about other issues?
Just a question. Should we put a time limit on when we expect this back, rather than leaving the Cultural Center hanging, but whether or not they're going to have a renewable lease and that sort of thing?
Mr. Robertson, could you give us a reasonable expectation?
Yes, absolutely. Well, we do have, the first agreement is expiring at the end of June, and we have budget committees and we have our agency meetings. So I think between the budget and the agency meetings, that we'll be able to bring it back to you at our earliest convenience, so that you have enough time to ask questions and hear all the information to make a decision.
Probably next month. Okay, thank you. Any other comments before the meeting's adjourned? All right. During the meeting, thank you.
We'll take a couple minutes, let the room clear out, and then we'll start the city council meeting.
I'm leaving the microphones on.
Mics are on.